of the League of Women Voters Rochester and I would like to welcome you, all of you tonight, the candidates, the audiences, and those viewing at a later time to this forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters Rochester. We'd also like to thank our generous partners of tonight's forum, the Rochester Post Bulletin, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Rochester Public Library for their help. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer organization organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we as a league do study and take stands on issues, we never support or oppose political parties or candidates. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not of LWV Rochester, or any partner or sponsor of this forum, and the sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. It is our purpose in sponsoring this forum to provide you with an educational opportunity to hear candidates discuss face-to-face issues that are important to you. Tonight's questions have come from LWV Rochester, the Post Bulletin, the Chamber of Commerce, and members of the live audience, plus questions that were submitted earlier. You are welcome to submit as many written questions as you would like on the note cards provided. Just hold up the cards as you finish them and a volunteer will collect them throughout the forum. If you are watching, you can, well, we don't have a livestream, so we'll just know that all questions are reviewed by LWV volunteers. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. Given our format, your questions must relate to both candidates. Questions that fall in the same general area may be consolidated to allow the moderator to cover as many as possible during our short time. We appreciate questions that are forward-looking rather than of the past, and if an answer is unclear, feel free to submit a follow-up question or contact the candidate after the forum. Cards do become the property of LWV Rochester. As there is never enough time to cover all of the issues in our limited time and setting such as this, we may not get to all of the questions that have been submitted, so please feel free to contact the candidate's campaign headquarters directly if your question is not addressed tonight. We would like to thank all of the candidates for running for office and for offering to serve our community, and for the enormous time, dedication, and commitment that running and serving demand. We encourage our members as individuals, as we encourage each of you to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. Welcome to tonight's forum, which features candidates for Olmsted County Commissioner, District 3. Candidates for the seat are April Suter and Greg Wright. Each candidate will have two minutes to offer an opening statement. The candidates will then respond in turn to questions provided by LWV Rochester, the evening's partners, and by the public, which were submitted in advance and here tonight. Candidates will have one minute each to answer. The candidates will then have two minutes each to make the closing statement. I would like to suggest to candidates that you make your answer as succinct as possible. It isn't necessary to use the entire time for your answer. When your time is up, you may finish the sentence, but you must then conclude your answer. Each candidate also has three 30-second rebuttal cards. These can be used at any point after each candidate has answered the question. Only one rebuttal card can be used per question, per candidate, and then please put the card in the basket after you have used it. I would like to remind the audience to remain silent during the forum, hold your applause until the end of the forum, and to turn off all electronic devices. Timekeepers for tonight are LWV Rochester members Anna Foiling and Jan Strand. Questions will be screened by LWV Rochester members Kathy Swessel and Mary Jones. Asking questions will be Randy Peterson from the Post Bulletin and Ryan Parsons from the Rochester Chamber of Commerce. The candidates have drawn numbers to determine the order of their opening and closing statements, and we'll begin with candidate Wright with her opening statement.
Thank you. I'm Greg Wright. I'm running for County Commissioner, District 3. I am seeking reelection because I have a proven record of success. I have worked with our state representatives and senators to procure funding for Olmsted projects. I've maintained Olmsted's AAA bond rating and financial excellence. I've championed Olmsted's leadership in increasing our low-income housing stock, improving home ownership, reducing our carbon footprint, protecting our groundwater, and bringing world-class knowledge for the future of waste-to-energy technology. During my tenure, I supported initiatives that resulted in Olmsted being named one of the best places to work, supported the construction of the New Nature Center, met with legislatures, which resulted in over $23 million for capital improvements, and additional county aid funding, as well as funding for the 4414 overpass project. I've supported the establishment and expansion of community outreach workers, which has had a great result in dealing with the mental health issues that we are confronted with, supported the work of public health, which was just reaccredited, supported law enforcement with a newly constructed regional safety center, supported collaboration with the county school districts to reduce homelessness among the youth, made it possible to start the age-friendly Olmsted County Organization, established a strategic plan for the next five years, encouraged all of our staff to innovate and create efficiencies. These past seven and a half years, I've demonstrated my effectiveness in guiding Olmsted County to be what it is today: stable, always moving forward, and highly respected. I ask for your vote to reelect me so that I can continue this history of success.
Thank you, candidate Wright. Candidate Suter.
Good evening. I'm April Suter, your candidate for District 3 County Commissioner. I live in a low-income, diverse neighborhood where neighbors know and look after each other. My work experience in social and human services is what draws me to run for County Commissioner. Seventy percent of the county's work focuses on social and human services. I have lived and understand this work and the people served. As part of my nonprofit employment with Family Service Rochester, United Way, and the Workforce Center, we formed partnerships across the business, government, nonprofit sectors, addressing complex community issues. The issues we face today are equally as complex, requiring collaboration as I've helped establish in the past. I'm a tireless and energetic person, active in many aspects of our community, including Age Friendly Olmsted County, Rochester Housing Alliance, our neighbors, Rotary, Neighborhood Associations, Rochester Officials Association, and Community Dental Center, thus connected to a wide range of people across Olmsted County. In the past six months, my volunteers and I have visited more than 11,200 homes in District 3, and some of those twice. I've listened, learned, and felt your emotions, and heard your concerns about the need for change, the growing tax burden, affordable housing, feeding your families, mental illness, climate change, and more. As your commissioner, I shall continue to be present, available, and approachable. I want to hear your hopes, your dreams for yourself, your family, your community, while creating opportunities for you to be involved in making that happen.
Thank you, candidate Suter. We'll begin the question portion, and we will begin with candidate Suter. Olmsted County recently abolished its Environmental Commission and Community Social Services Advisory Board. How would you propose gathering ongoing citizen input on an array of issues?
I would start by saying I think that it's a mistake to diminish opportunities for people to be involved. If what we want to do is hear from people, get their ideas, and know what they're thinking, we have to create opportunities for them to be involved, and the closing of those opportunities only lessens what we can hear from residents.
Thank you, candidate Suter. Candidate Wright.
Well, thank you very much. I would not characterize this as abolishment of a committee. What I would say is that we've learned that there are certain kinds of committees that need more expertise, and certainly we want to hear from the people of Olmsted County. And what we've heard from Olmsted County is that they want a sustainable climate environment. In order to do that, we need some expertise in order to do that. So what we did is that we are opening this up, and we just finished the first one, and we're starting another one, of gathering expertise of how we can reduce the carbon from our waste energy plant. And there will be other kinds of committees that we will have, and certainly we will have people from Olmsted County in there, but we will also need to invite expertise.
Thank you, candidate Wright. Our next question is an online question that has been submitted, and we'll start with candidate Wright. Homeownership is a pillar of our county, and affordable housing continues to be a struggle for all people in Olmsted County. What are the specific steps you will take to ensure that all people are able to own a home in Olmsted County?
Well, I think homeownership is very good for everybody, and I think it really helps them to be a part of the community. Well, partly what we've done is that we've contributed about $15 million to the Housing Coalition. Part of that money was used to help BIPOC community learn about the process of how that they can get money in order to build a house, how they can maintain a house, how they can keep a house, and how they can be part of that community. So we are looking at those kinds of things in order to bring more people into the homeownership process.
Thank you. Candidate Suter.
Rochester, Minnesota, and the U.S. as a whole, is suffering the worst housing shortage since our troops came home from World War II. The lack of investment in housing, particularly low-income, affordable housing, is what has gotten us to where we are today. Not everyone wants to own a home, so homeownership isn't the answer for everyone. What we need is affordable options for renters, homeowners, and for people who want to downsize. It's going to take developers, builders, contractors, realtors, investors, nonprofits, government agencies, and the business community, and investments from them to address our affordable housing, affordable living crisis.
Thank you. Our next question will be asked by the Chamber of Commerce, and we'll begin with candidate Suter.
Good evening, candidates. Olmsted County continues to be one of the fastest-growing counties in Minnesota. That can place a strain on infrastructure and services. How do you envision ensuring that that infrastructure, those services, are able to accommodate the growth while also maintaining a high level of quality of life in Olmsted County?
We have a footprint of Rochester that is not very densely populated, which creates challenges to fund infrastructure. As we grow, and particularly in District 3, where we have a preponderance of low-income housing, the growth in the need for social services, the need for affordable housing, is going to continue to grow, and it's going to take a variety of investments to address those needs. Olmsted County is charged with providing the social services that people of any income need as they qualify, and that's going to be a challenge, and I believe that Olmsted County and our leadership will rise to that. We also need to be doing city-county planning.
Thank you. Candidate Wright.
Thank you very much. Olmsted County already has a premier infrastructure system in place, and this is done because the county has looked ahead far into the future and done those things in the past. Our social services that we work with our low-income people, our mentally ill people, our homeless people are already in good stead, and we've been recognized by this throughout the state. But the infrastructure that maybe the Chamber of Commerce is talking about is something that we need to look at a little bit bigger. We cannot do this without the city involvement, and so we need to work along with the city and other people in order to establish the infrastructure that we need for housing, for roads, for bridges, for transportation, all of those things that a great city is going to need.
Thank you. Our next question comes from LWV Rochester. I'm sorry, what? Oh, rebuttal. Oh, my apologies. Yes. Thank you.
So Mr. Wright claims that we have the social services that we need, particularly mental health, and we know that this is a challenge statewide. It is a big challenge in Olmsted County. There's not enough mental health services, and we just learned from Mayo Clinic that they will not house certain populations that don't have medical necessity. If you talk with professionals in the field, they will tell you, there's a shortage of mental health services, there's a shortage of services, adequate services for people who are unhoused, and we have very many people in the community who do not feel the stability that my opponent is talking about.
Thank you. Candidate Wright.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much. Olmsted County is the leader in the state in this area, and yes, there's always more that can be done. I would never say that, and I always strive to do that. But let's look at what we've done. We built a Southeast Regional Crisis Center that was the first in the state to do that. We added social workers to support our homeless people, as well as in housing. We had community outreach workers, eight of them that do the mental illness preparation.
Thank you so much, candidate Wright. Appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Our next question comes from the league, and candidate Wright will begin. According to the recent ALIS study released by the United Way of Olmsted County, one out of every three households in Olmsted County is unable to meet their basic needs, which may include housing, food, childcare. In what areas with that information, how will that impact your decisions?
Well, one of the things that the county does is that we contribute greatly to Channel One Food Services, and because we do know that food and availability of food is very important. In fact, we just increased our amount of aid to those services, and I think that that's really important. We do help people who are interested in establishing childcare. We don't have money for that childcare, but we do help them do that, and we're willing to collaborate with anybody else that would like to help with that, solving the childcare crisis.
Thank you. Candidate Suter.
Yes, so the ALIS study, if people haven't seen it, recommend you take a look. It's pretty enlightening because it shows the degree of financial stress and poverty that people in Olmsted County are living in that don't get captured by federal standards. I think we need to look pretty deeply. When you look around, we've got 33% of our households who are struggling, and when we raise taxes, even if they're not homeowners, their taxes get raised through their rent. When we don't pay a wage that doesn't afford them to buy food, pay the rent, fix the car, get children to childcare, we need to start looking at what we expect from our workers and how we think that they can live on what we pay.
Thank you. All right. We are going to go to the Post Bulletin next, and candidate Suter will begin.
County housing staff is working with the city of Rochester and a variety of nonprofit organizations to develop an AnyPath Home program to address homelessness. What do you see is the county's ideal role in this combined effort?
So AnyPath Home has proven successful in Milwaukee and in Houston in reducing the homeless population, because it not only provides housing, so it's a housing-first model, it also provides the wraparound services that help people become stable. And we need to understand that people are homeless for a variety of reasons, and helping individuals with a plan and those services can help stabilize them and bring them to getting off of services or some services. It's the county's role, I think, to help bring that about. It is a core service, and there are social workers within the county, and there's affordable housing that people could gain access to for stabilization.
Thank you. Candidate Wright.
Yeah, thank you. I'm pretty excited about the AnyPath Home model, because I think that all cities have been struggling with this, and we took a look at what's going on in other cities, and I think one of the biggest things about this program is that it appears to have great community support, and that's what we've always been lacking before, was community support for the efforts that the county is doing. And the community support is for nonprofits and other organizations to help out with this. The second part of the AnyPath Home is supportive services. We have already added supportive services, social workers, to where we have our high-density, underprivileged people living in homes, and they already know how to do this supportive services. So we're ready to move forward with this model and hope that we can reduce the homeless population by a great deal.
Thank you. All right. Next question is from our audience, and we will begin with candidate Wright. How can the commissioners balance the county's needs in terms of programs, employees, and facilities with the plans to make improvements at Graham Park?
Well, in my opinion, I think that we've done a good job in trying to balance that already, in that Graham Park is for the citizens of Olmsted County, so that they have outlets and entertainment as well. You cannot have a great county without having some outlets for those kinds of respite and entertainment, so that the county is more than just business. And we have to balance the funds for those kinds of things along with the mandates that we receive from the state in order to do those kinds of things. But that's what makes a great county. That's what makes it worthwhile for people to come to Olmsted County. That's what makes it worthwhile for development to come to Olmsted County.
Great. Thank you. Candidate Suter.
The county has a small amount of wiggle room in a budget. About 70% of what the county has to do is mandated by state and federal government, and so there's resources to be used. There's also the opportunity to, for the Graham Park development, to get funding from the state through bonding, and to also finance some of that through user fees at Graham Park. Building the facilities there so that they are multipurpose expands opportunities for communities, whether they're cultural groups or others who sometimes don't have spaces as well. as well. Having a place for community is important.
Great. Thank you. Our next question is an online question, and we'll begin with Candidate Suter. Please describe your position with respect to supporting public environmental sustainability and carbon reduction projects. And if you are supportive, is there one such project that you might advocate for?
I'm going to have you read that again.
Absolutely. Please describe your position with respect to supporting public environmental sustainability and carbon reduction projects. If you are supportive, what might be one such project you might advocate for?
So, we are in unprecedented times with climate change. It does take public, private, and all sorts of investment to address where we're headed. Public investment is a way to leverage other funds and to also lead and set an example. We need to take a three-pronged approach. We need to reduce our carbon footprint. We need to replace energy. And we also need to lead by example. So, as a public entity, I think we have, as Olmsted County, the opportunity to start with looking at all the decarbonization that we can do with the county fleet, the county buildings, and the buildings that the county owns, so all the housing projects.
Great. Thank you. Candidate Wright.
Well, thank you very much. Olmsted County is again ahead in this area. We've already put in one solar field on land that the county owns. We're looking at several other acres that can support solar fields. We're adding solar to our buildings. We just, when we did re-roofing projects, we put in the foundations for those so that we can have the solar later on. Our waste-to-energy plant is already carbon-negative. We would like it to be better, to reduce even more carbon, but it's already carbon-negative. And we've started on another project to experiment with organic waste, your food services. We have about 150 people that are already participating in that. We've already collected 5,000 pounds of organics and using them to make green energy. So, we're quite far ahead in that, and I will continue to press for that in the future.
Thank you. Our next question will come from the chamber, and we will begin with Candidate Wright.
What strategies can the county employ to encourage business development, both new and established?
Well, you know, the county, in our next budget, we are contributing money to the Small Business Association, which is part of HOSS at Ready. And we believe that this is really important because small businesses are the backbone of the business industry in Olmsted County. And I think that that will help our minority population and our BIPOC organizations because that's a way ahead for them. Also, in order to do, to support that, I think it's really important, and we've already talked about, that we have to have a foundation for a good social climate. And Olmsted already has that, and we contribute to that in many ways, to make Olmsted a wanted place for businesses to come.
Thank you. Candidate Suter.
One of the primary purposes that counties exist is to deliver on social and human services. We have to think about what position the county should take in business development. Our county and our city is one of the fastest-growing in Minnesota. Is it prudent use of taxpayer dollars to be investing in businesses? Because we have more than a half a dozen organizations that do small business and medium-sized business development. We're an attractive place because of what the city and the county have in place. Let's keep those things strong. Let's keep our business climate strong. But let's think long and hard about whether we need to invest county dollars into business development.
All right. Thank you. Another question from online, and we'll begin with Candidate Suter. Some of the rhetoric around focusing on the needs of the 65-plus-aged community can feel very alienating to some. How can you ensure equitable treatment across age demographics in the county?
The 65-plus population is the largest-growing demographic in Olmsted County in Minnesota in the United States. So, they're going to get some attention. And you know, the baby boomers, they've always garnered attention because they've been the We have an inequity for where resources are spent. And so, now that the older population is starting to get some attention and their needs are growing because we have more octogenarians now than we've ever had, I think we need to be looking at where we allocate county funds and what we're mandated to do and where we have flexibility to ensure that we have resources where we need them and for the people who need them.
Thank you. Candidate Wright.
Well, thank you. My opponent has really given you the demographics that we're all aware of because we're all in this room, and you can look around and see the demographics. And you can look at 2030 when the first of the baby boomers turned 85. All right? So, we know that this is coming. But just talking about the demographics and talking about money isn't getting us there. Meanwhile, I've been doing some things about that. I was the one that brought to Olmsted County to recognize age-friendly Rochester, age-friendly Olmsted County. I participate in a task force on aging, a legislative task force on aging. And I have testified before that legislative action in order that we need a State Department level, a cabinet-level position on aging because the culture that we have established in this country about aging really needs to be changed. And that can start at the state level. And the county can also help it by investigating the kinds of things that we can do in order to fill the gaps that exist for aging.
Thank you, Candidate Wright. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I just want to make sure that people understand, I spent 10 years running aging programs. I spent 10 years running job training programs for kids and for displaced workers. I've worked with families who are needing supports and well-being. I've worked with the spectrum. And it takes that balance and that experience to understand what we need across the board and to be able to lend that voice.
Thank you. Our next question comes from the audience, and we will begin, I believe, with Candidate Wright. So, what would you like to see Olmsted County do that it is not doing to support our local caregiving economy?
Define caregiving. Are you talking about kids? Are you talking about older people? Who what?
Who what? It says local caregivers.
Local caregivers.
Caregiving. Yeah. Local caregiving economy.
Yeah. All right. So, the caregiving workers also need some support. So, we do have mental health services, and we encourage those people. But I think that also we can help collaborate with them to try to set up kind of respite care because caregiving is very emotionally draining, and it's also physically draining on people, and they do need some rest. I have friends who take care of their parents, and it's very even difficult to get other family members to kind of come in and give respite. So, I think that that's part of what we can do to give those caregivers some respite and some aid. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Candidate Suter.
Yes. So, through my work at Family Service Rochester, we did a lot of work with caregivers. And caregivers come in all ages and shapes and sizes. There's people who are caring for disabled children, who are young, disabled children who are older. There's elderly people who are providing care, and there's elderly people who need caregiving. There's also people who are medically needy who need care and who are receiving caregiver support. Having and working with nonprofits and others to provide volunteers to give respite to caregivers, to provide some of the services that people need, to give that caregiver a break, and also to have some legislative action around the monetary and financial support for caregivers.
Great. Thank you. Our next question was an online submission, and we'll begin with Candidate Suter. The city of Rochester is approximately 80% of the tax capacity of Olmsted County and 75% of the population. Because of this, Rochester taxpayers pay for the cost of city government and a significant portion of county government. Given the circumstance, are there any areas of local government you feel could be consolidated to reduce costs and promote overall efficiency of service?
There used to be a tri-county, a tri-government group with the city, the county, and the school district that worked across the entities and had joint planning and joint functions. Some of that went away, and that came about because leadership changed. We are starting to see some of that work together again, especially around housing and homelessness. I'd like to see us do some things around climate and probably around budgeting and taxation. There's many ways that the city, the county, and the school district could come together and consolidate some functions to reduce the expenses to the taxpayers, which we all are.
Thank you. Candidate Wright.
Well, thank you. A different model that you might look at rather than consolidation would be collaboration. And I think that collaboration is the way of the future to work together for common good. And that means that everybody has something in it that the county can benefit from, not just themselves, but for the benefit of the entire county. If I was going to do some of those things, if I had the ability to do that, I would bring together county planning. Now, it was at one time consolidated, but in order for us to increase the number of housing stock and low-income housing, we have to have zoning that's going to allow for smaller lots, some modest homes from some large homes. And that's going to take all of us together in order to get that done. So, and I think that we've already started on that process of talking with the city in order to collaborate to get those things done. It just takes a lot of time to get it together before the plan comes out, but we're working on that.
Great. Thank you. Our next question comes from the audience, and it is, if Olmsted County were to build 100 units for unsheltered individuals, might Olmsted County attract more individuals seeking services? And we will begin with Candidate Wright.
So, this is the if we build it, they will come question, I think, that you're talking about. Now, I'm for making sure that we take care of people in Olmsted County. And if you look at the number of homeless that we've counted over the years, it remains about 150, even though we have found homes and permanent shelter for a lot of those people. So, the question is, why is it still at 150? And that's what part of the Any Path Home is studying to see. Where are they coming from and why are they coming? Because I don't think that Olmsted County, as good as we are, can house the world. But we can take care of the homeless people that we should be taking care of, and I'm all for taking care of those people that are in Olmsted County.
Great. Thank you. Candidate Suter.
Well, just because we would build housing or have 100 units doesn't mean we're going to necessarily attract more unhoused people. But the fact that we have a lot of services, we have a lot of nonprofits, we have a lot of opportunities in Olmsted County, we attract people to our community. And sometimes those people fall on harder times. And sometimes they are able to get back on their own, and they're contributing back to the community. So, we have an attractive community to come to for help, and we have an attractive community to come to for opportunities.
Thank you. Our next question will come from the chamber, and we'll begin with Candidate Suter.
What do you believe is a priority to ensure that Olmsted County remains financially stable?
First of all, Olmsted County and the city of Rochester have excellent bond ratings, and that helps us remain stable because the money that we borrow, we get at a cheaper rate. We also need to make sure that we're taking care of people who live here and that people who live here can take care of themselves by paying living wages, by having housing that's affordable, by them being able to have the basic things that they need. If we have an unstable population, that's going to create greater instability in the community. And the more unstable we become, the more resources it's going to take. And so, if we look at this ALIS study and say, we need to address the needs and the situation that 33% of our population find themselves in, that will help us with sustainability and financial stability.
Thank you, Candidate Suter. Thank you. Candidate Wright.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Happy to. What is a priority that is essential to ensuring that Olmsted County remains financially stable?
All right. Well, the priority is good planning. You have to have a plan. You have to have a strategic plan, which I contributed to, to create a five-year plan so that we know where the county is going and that we know what we're going to have to fund in the future. In addition to that, it takes careful budgeting. And I've been very careful about that budgeting process. We have a triple-A bond rating, but that doesn't happen by accident. That happens because myself and the other commissioners watch that very carefully so that we know when we borrow money, just what the tails are going to be in the future and what we're going to have to be paying in the future. So, all of those things are really, are very important. Good planning, careful budgeting, and watching our budget to make sure that we do keep that triple-A bond rating. If there's anything that talks about why I have been a successful commissioner, it's because of the triple-A bond rating. Only about 3% of the counties in the entire United States have a triple-A bond rating, and you're so welcome.
Thank you. And with that, that ends the question. And with that, that ends the question portion, and we will move to closing statements. And we will begin with candidate Suter.
Well, thank you to the League of Women Voters, the Rochester Public Library, and all who helped make tonight possible, including the audience. I entered this race to bring my four decades of human service experience to help inform county decisions. For years, I've championed the needs of Homestead County residents, from children and families to working adults and seniors. From my extensive background in human services and budget management, I have gained a deep understanding of the diverse challenges our community faces. The priorities I had when entering this race were shaped by these years of experience and have only been reinforced by the conversations I've had with thousands across the district: supporting adequate and affordable housing for single people, families, and our growing older adult population; mental health services; keeping taxes in check; building for a sustainable future; working collaboratively with others; and change. My vision for the future of Homestead County is shaped by these conversations. The opportunity for citizen involvement doesn't stop and start with the vote. I believe that best solutions are found when we bring residents, businesses, nonprofits, and government together in partnership, as we are doing around affordable housing. Now I seek to use my extensive experience and track record to serve as your county commissioner, listening to the many diverse voices in our community, working always to bring these voices to the conversations where decisions are being made. After the election, I will continue to be available, welcoming your communications and interactions. I respectfully ask for your vote so that I may serve as your District Three County Commissioner and bring the change you seek.
Thank you. Candidate Wright.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present today. I appreciate that. And my website is www.homesteadcounty.us. It has seven and a half years of history on all of the things that I have supported at Homestead County and all the things that I have been successful with. Throughout my seven and a half years as your county commissioner, I've demonstrated that my experience, expertise, and involvement in state, local issues, and federal issues has contributed to the well-being of Homestead County residents. Our staff is dedicated and innovative and grows more diverse each year. I will continue in my efforts to ensure that Homestead County leads the state in housing, in mental health, in environmental protection, and waste energy technology. People know that a vote for me is a vote to continue the successes of Homestead County. A commissioner cannot be one-issue-focused. My experience and knowledge covers the breadth and depth of the many issues confronting the county while always being mindful of the budget consequences. There are many things for people to worry about, but I have made sure that Homestead County is not one of them. The county is very successful in meeting today's and tomorrow's challenges. You know that you will get more successes when you vote for me. These past seven and a half years, I have demonstrated my effectiveness in guiding Homestead County to be what it is today: stable, always moving forward, and highly respected. I ask for your vote to reelect me so that I can continue this history of success.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you to the candidates for participating in tonight's forum. Oh, you're going to rebut?
I'd like to use my last green card.
So we usually use those in the closing statement if there is something that the candidate said that you feel like was untrue about you or something that you felt like needed to be cleared up. Do you feel like that is something that happened?
Yes.
All right.
So my opponent stated that he's pretty budget-conscious and is always taking that into consideration. And I would just like to offer an example. This week, my opponent was one of five county commissioners who voted for a ten percent salary increase for themselves. As I've listened to constituents across the district, they've been loud and clear that they're financially stressed, they're struggling to pay their bills, to feed their families. And I don't think that this is a... Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Candidate Wright.
All right. Yes, I did vote for a ten percent increase in our salary. And that's because the Homestead County salaries, when we have comparative counties, were more than about seventeen thousand dollars below the median, the average, of those salaries. And we needed to bring those salaries up so that the future people who want to run for county commissioner can support themselves. In addition to that, we included a seven percent increase for the sheriff because the sheriff's position is lower than other counties around us. And we increased the amount for the county attorney.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're so welcome.
All right. Now, I would like to thank each of the candidates for participating in tonight's forum. Thank you for your service to the community and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. I would like to remind you that the views expressed in the forum tonight were those of the candidates, not those of LWV Rochester or any partner or sponsor of the forum. Thanks to our partners, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, the Rochester Post Bulletin, and the Rochester Public Library. Remember, Election Day is November 5th, and early voting starts tomorrow, September 20th. And please remember to vote. If you have a question about your polling place, would like to see a sample ballot, or learn about the candidates, visit Vote 411. To see this forum again, access the forums on the LWV Rochester website or the Rochester Public Library YouTube channel. The library and the LWV Rochester post complete, unedited recordings of this forum on their websites. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of this forum may not be posted on the candidate websites or social media or used for political purposes. Links to LWV or Rochester Public Library recordings, however, are welcome. And we're going to take a short break before we begin our 7:00 PM forum. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. All right. Thank you. 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 Thank you.